Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the City of Farmers Branch Regular City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. The time is 6:01 PM. We will begin our meeting as always with the invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Retana.
Let us pray. Loving heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your blessings and your help. We pray for your guidance throughout today's council meeting on the matters at hand and show us how to conduct our work with the spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Help us work together and encourage each other. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and further for the, to be the best we can for our great city. Thank you for your continued guidance. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Next are our ceremonial items. And tonight, E1 is the presentation of a award for cooking with the council throwdown. And I know she doesn't necessarily enjoy the spotlight, so I'm going to give her all the time. Let's cook.
So y'all have something to look at. We created a little slide. Okay. On Friday, April 23rd, two teams competed with Cooking with the Council Throwdown chef division. After six years, we have two council members transitioning on council and for a healthy competition. Councilmembers Norwood and Baumgartner, our partner, is Spicy Zest and Red Sticks Asian Street Food. Chef Nimadu, owner of Spicy Zest, and Chef Uno, Red Sticks Asian Street Food, were our chefs. And former, I mean, Councilman Baumgartner was unavailable, so former Councilman Bronson Blackson filled in at the last second, and City Manager Charles Cox was the culinary judge. So tonight, I would like to unveil the winners. They've been waiting patiently, and we have a little award for them. They came up with their own names, and I'd like to call down Councilmember Norwood and Councilmember Baumgartner. If y'all will come down here, because I have awards in different categories for both of y'all. Just because Bronson filled in doesn't mean he gets to go home with anything. That's how we work here. He was well aware of it, and he said yes. Okay, so let me tell you, they came up with their own team names. And Chef Nimadu and Chef Uno, will y'all please come up here too? Yep. Okay, so Spicy Zest and Councilmember Norwood, name themselves Team Colombo. Okay, the capital of Sri Lanka is Colombo, and Councilwoman Norwood knew that immediately and said, "We're on Team Colombo." So I went to the head there. And then Team Potster was the name Bronson and Uno came up with, which is really so perfect if you know them. Okay. So the best taste and best presentation out of three categories, we have the first two, best taste and best presentation, go to Team Colombo. And Team Potster won. And Councilmembers Baumgartner and Norwood, we wanted y'all to go home at Red Memory with a cutting board, so you can hone in on your culinary skills, because we know the chefs really helped you with this. Healthy, friendly competition of doing something fun, because you've done six years of hard work. So we enjoy your participation. Thank you, Bronson, for being available so quickly. And we can take a quick picture. Now, Red Sticks Asian Street Food will be opened at the Shop Summestings Station, which is on B Street sometime this summer. And then Spicy Zest, of course, is up on Jose Lane. So let's take a picture over here.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
I'd like to just thank the two teams, and thank you for participating.
You know, when the first item comes back to you, you can weigh in at that time. So next is our report on study session items, which will be led by Councilmember Retana.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be giving, sharing a brief overview of our study session. If you'd like additional details, the recording will be available on our website for further review. First, we had A1, discussion on regular agenda items. Councilmember Lynn did have one question about I4 related to the resolution itself and seeing what the effects would be, should it move forward. For A2, we had our Code Enforcement Task Force update. There was a review by the task force on our entire code and basically giving recommendations for council. They provided feedback on city's existing property maintenance regulations, offering their recommendations. Some of the general findings were around the lack of clarity and readability, level of enforceability, redundancies, weaponizing language, and the lack of code officer discretion. Again, more details can be found on our website. Next steps for this particular item, there would be recommendation given by, by the council and will be incorporated within the document for the point of discussion by the city council to continue the discussion and make final recommendations. A3, we had a bi- annual update from our senior advisory board. The Brand Connection is open and excited to, to open its doors once again for its members. Attendance levels have gone up 71% since March and about 5,600 programs since October of 2020. So they've been very, very busy and look forward to being even busier in the coming months. And last, we had A4, which was a discussion of upcoming potential agenda items. And there was one item brought forth by Councilmember Lynn to bring back the conversation around a streetlight initiative that was discussed in conjunction with Councilmember Baumgartner. And that is all I have.
Councilmember Retana, thank you very much. I think the only thing you left out was how Councilmember Norwood really wanted to wish everyone in this town, may the fourth be with you. So, next is the City Manager's Report on Items of Community Interest. Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. Our renovated community recreation center has reopened its first floor. The new space is a brighter lobby area, an expanded fitness floor, and a spacious and colorful childcare area. The Firehouse Cedar will move the action to their backlot with an outdoor production of the Cotton Patch Gospel starting May the 6th. The musical features country music to convey classic biblical stories. The Denton Drive Live Concert Series returns to the Grove at Mustang Station on Saturday, May 8th from, with moving colors at 6:15 PM and Just Like Pink at 8:15 PM. The Mansky Library will close on Friday, May the 14th, for an estimated four weeks to accommodate its renovation project. During this time, materials will be unavailable for checkout, but no overdue fines will accrue and due dates will be extended. The project will add a larger maker space, additional meeting space, and bring the entire building into ADA compliance. Kids of all ages are invited to show their support for our officers in blue. Come to the Chalk the Walk event and draw a thank you message for our police on the front driveway of the Justice Center, Saturday, May 15th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 3723 Valleyview Lane. The Branch Connection has another outdoor bazaar scheduled Saturday, May the 22nd. The free event will allow up to 25 vendors to market unique gifts, home decor, antiques, and specialty items in a socially distant atmosphere. Also, a reminder about the Texas Power Switch program, a licensed energy aggregator that facilitates cheaper rates. The next auction will be May the 18th. Sign up is free. Go to texaspowerswitch.com for more information. The Farmers Branch Outdoor Aquatic Center, or Frog Pond, opens on Memorial Day weekend. Our Public Health Department has a reminder that mosquito season has arrived. Please drain standing water and remember to wear repellent when outside at dawn and dusk. And finally, you can sign up for E-News at farmersbranchtx.gov to have current city news and information delivered directly to your email inbox. And with that, that's the City Manager Report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next is our citizen comments. There's a three-minute time limit for each citizen to speak with a maximum of 15 total minutes on the same topic. Anyone wishing to speak shall be courteous and cordial. No disparaging or inflammatory remarks directed at any member of the city council or staff will be allowed. We have two members, two people signed up to speak tonight. The first one is Omar Roman. Name and address, please.
2001 Whittington Place, Omar Roman. Good evening. On April the 20th, the city council meeting, I had signed up to speak for all consent and regular agenda items. And a mistake occurred that violated state law and infringed upon my rights as a resident of Farmers Branch. Firstly, when the consent agenda items come up for discussion, a vote to approve those items immediately occurred. Normally, citizens are permitted to speak before a vote is taken. Fortunately, Council would, Norwood, was then advised that I was accidentally skipped, and I was given an opportunity to address the already approved items. However, the fact that the vote was taken before I was permitted to speak was a violation of Chapter 551, Section 551.007, subsection B, that basically states that I must be given the right to speak before or during an item's consideration. This item was no longer under consideration when I was called to speak. Later, the same, in the same meeting, when item J521-189 came up for discussion, I was accidentally skipped again, but this time, I was never called up to speak. This was also a violation of the same subsection that I previously mentioned. Let me be perfectly clear. I completely empathize with Councilmember Norwood and understand that he normally doesn't run the city council meetings and that mistakes are prone to happen. We had a good conversation after the meeting, and I accepted his sincere apology. The reason I'm addressing this is because if it happened to me twice during the same meeting, it could happen to any other resident. I would like everyone who is listening to understand the issues with this new policy. I fear that this policy will prevent us from addressing our elected representatives regarding issues that affect our families, our community, and our finances. To end, my question is simple. What are you going to do to prevent this issue from happening again? Mayor, you stated in today's study session that you would support removing policies that are unclear or flawed. So I would hope that your response will be consistent with what you just stated earlier today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Rinkesh Desai. Desai, sorry.
Rinkesh Desai, 1753 Hanover Court, Farmers Branch, 75234. Hey, everyone. My name is Rink Desai. I've seen many of you many, many times, and I want to say thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. The agenda item is not one of the items for today, but it is something that I want you guys to consider as I know there's been a lot of backdoor conversations that are occurring. And the way I see it is, when we look at what are the next steps for Mercer Crossing, there are decisions that are going to be made that are going to make people unhappy. And I understand that from an economics perspective, the city wants to make money, developer wants to make money, and even residents, even I want to make money, right? I don't want to do something that I'm not going to make money on. But my expectation is that we have checks and balances put in for our leaders or developers, as well as for our residents. And I'm here because I don't feel that is necessarily true for our community. We've been in such a rush to quickly kind of build things and get things moving, that we haven't really stopped and checked on what's being built and what's been built already. I'll give you an example. The progress that's happening in Mercer Crossing, supposedly, you know, $75,000 were spent by the developer for the playground area. But no one's been able to validate that this was a real expense in that area. Even the original blueprint for the clubhouse looks different from inside than what was actually delivered at the end of the day. And did you know that even from a builder's perspective, the supplies of the equipment in the clubhouse, such as pool chairs, tables, and all those things, came out of funding of the HOA? We didn't have any choice on what kind of things we wanted, but we definitely paid for that. And it just seems a bit unfair. Now, our bid was $45 million. Everyone's aware, we spent $45 million on infrastructure. The reason why I'm bringing these items up is, has anyone looked into what was the real cost of actually doing some of this work? Was it, did it actually cost $45 million, or was the numbers inflated? And the reason I ask whether or not there was an inflation in numbers is because in our HOA expense sheets, we're seeing an inflation in numbers for some of the normal things that the HOA would do, such as landscaping. And I know that the city doesn't care about the HOA, and it's a separate matter, but there is a strong correlation because the developer is sitting on the HOA board. And I would like it if the city could do their due diligence and look into, you know, some of the expenses and things that the developer has taken. And the other item I want to bring up to your attention, I have 14 seconds, is the public amenities. We don't have any public amenities in Mercer Crossing West. And so all the new apartments and things that are being built, they're all using our amenities. So we're finding beer cans and dog poop and all sorts of things laying around our neighborhoods. And they're being used by people from outside. And we've seen it. They've taken up, you know, some of the parking areas, and we've seen residents going into our amenities centers and using our amenities center, even though they don't have access. So with that said, I would really appreciate if the city can look into a possible way of being able to add more amenities to our area. There was an option by the developer to give-
Mr. Desai, let's wrap it up.
I'm almost done. So there was an option given by the developer, instead of building out the amphitheater if the city wanted to purchase that land. I know the city doesn't have the budget or the funding to do that at this point, but I'm asking you to get creative, find a way, and determine if there is something that can be done for us to help build this city better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is our consent agenda. We have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Roman? I'll give you three minutes per item.
Do you want me to repeat my address and name?
Yes, please.
Omar Roman, 2001 Whittington Place. So I guess I just, I'd like to understand a little bit about, um, let's see, I3R2021-065. I'd just like to understand what, what exactly is going to be built and a little bit of what we should expect to see once that project is complete. That's the only question I have. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Bentley.
Mark Bentley, Director of Public Works. What's going to be constructed is we're going to take a concrete line channel. Currently, it's in disrepair and completely reconstruct it, widen it, so that we can bring the floodplain down and lower the flood elevations. So what you'll end up seeing is, right now, you have a concrete structure, sidewalks and everything else. You'll end up with a widened channel with vertical walls by a block-type wall system with a concrete bottom. And that'll go from B Street all the way up to Spring Valley. And at Spring Valley, we'll be replacing the culvert, the bridge structure that's there. And that's what we're, that's the work that is going to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Councilmember Retana.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next are our regular agenda items. J1 is to receive the fiscal year 2020/2021 second quarter financial report. Ms. Evans-Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sherrell Evans-Jones, Director of Finance, here today to present the second quarter financial results for the period ended March 31st, 2021. So I already know that with today being May 4th, that we were going to have a lot of people talking about, "May the fourth be with you." So I'm not doing that. But what I do want to talk about is a special day, May 4th day, that had an impact on the unemployment rate. And that day, or that unemployment rate has to do with Dallas, because on May 4th, 1991, JR Bobby, Sue Ellen, and a whole bunch of people lost their jobs because it was the last episode of Dallas that ran. And a lot of, a whole lot of very loyal Dallas fans, including my mom, and a lot of folks who used to watch that show, were very devastated. And I mentioned that in terms of unemployment rates, these are not real people, but I thought they were growing up, the way my mom talked about them. With that information, let's get into the financial results. And I always start by talking about the general fund. It's our largest fund. And what you have before you and just kind of a little bit of orientation as to how things are laid out for those who may be watching from the public and want to understand. Hopefully, my cursor shows up on the screen. You have your adjusted budget here and actual information. What we typically do is we have for certain revenue items in particular, we have expectations for them to move faster or slower, depending on how, we have certain historic information. And what we do is we tend to evaluate expected results compared to how things are coming in from an actual perspective. And then out here to the far right side, that gives you a little bit of comparison as to how those numbers look for that same period in the previous year. So we will start with our property tax. That number is performing very well. I know we had a little bit of concern as we dealt with COVID and how that might impact the property tax numbers. We do know that our property tax numbers at a expectation of about 99% are nearly all collected at this point. We build our budget based on about 99% expectation. We have a little bit more collection because it has to do with settlements of past disputed items that we didn't necessarily factor into when we were building the budget, but they're shaking out more favorable in terms of collections for the city. In terms of sales tax, another large revenue item for the city, that again is an area that we were a little bit holding our breath, trying to see exactly how that number would be impacted. You see, it's performing at about 53, 53, 54% of budget compared to where we think we would be about halfway through, since we're halfway through the year. So that's performing a little bit better than expectation. And that's a number that we continue to watch. In terms of franchise fees, this is an item that we've talked about in previous quarterly updates. This number, when it was built, it was based on past year's expectations in terms of collection. What we learned after the development of the budget number is that there's been some changes in legislation that allows for different payments from certain franchisees to the city. So you see some softening of that number. I'm jumping down to kind of the, hit the more material numbers. So licensing and permits is another area. This is where revenue comes in as things are being built within the city, permitting fees. We continue to see that that number is performing well in terms of continued development within the city and that revenue being realized. Charges for services, we have a little bit of performance behind expectations. If you recall, there was a number of changes in terms of reductions of classes. That's where those revenue items tend to show up from some of our recreation functionality. And so this is an item where you see a little bit of softening in the revenue there. Now, I'm going to jump down to expenses, and I kind of have those grouped in terms of large categories of expenses. Our expenses, you see, especially with our general fund, we, for the most part, have an expectation that things are going to perform on a pro-rata basis throughout the year. Some of those things can perform faster or slower. Some of those things can perform faster or slower. And I'll say that one area that we tend to see, it's not unusual to see performing in terms of the actual at a little bit faster rate, has to do with our public works. That group tends to, at the beginning of the year, open large purchase orders, which serve, which, when a purchase order is opened, it shows in the actual, even though the funds have not been expended yet. So you see some, that performing in terms of actuals at about 55% compared to 50%. The other areas are largely moving on trend. We don't have any major issues or problems overall with the general fund, and so we are pleased with its performance. I'm going to shift over and talk a little bit about the enterprise fund. So this is where our water and sewer and stormwater is, this is the fund where those items reside. Similar layout as the previous page, so you will see, in terms of both the water and sewer revenue and the stormwater revenue, those items are both performing ahead of expectation. We, based on what we can see, that largely has to do with, especially from the water and sewer charges, that largely has to do with consumption. And the data is showing us that it mostly has to do with people being home more during the period of dealing with COVID. Dropping down to the expenditures, water and sewer administration is largely moving on budget at 51% compared to 50%. And this is another big area in terms of water sewer operations. So this is another big area where you see a ton of purchase orders for all of our TRA or our sewer services, as well as purchase orders for the payment of water services. So to help the public understand a little bit, we receive in revenue from, from households and businesses making their revenue payment, but we pay that money back out in terms of paying for the water services that we purchase from Dallas Water Utilities or the sewer services that we purchase from TRA. So just kind of giving you a little bit of a picture of how those funds are performing. Lastly, in terms of our fund presentation, we take a look at the Hotel Motel. This is an area where in past quarterly presentations, we have watched a softening of this number. When we developed the number and the budget, we knew that this is an area because of COVID and the contraction of people traveling for both personal reasons and the business travel has contracted quite a bit. We anticipated seeing that, and that's exactly what you see in terms of a 47% expectation compared to a 32, 33, 33% actual. So that revenue number is softer than we would prefer. Dropping down to the other material expenditure items within the Hotel Motel Fund, those revenue items that come in largely support both historic preservation and the promotion of tourism. So as funds come in, appear, we make the payments to incent that type of travel. I know that embedded in some of this actual has to do with, and that's what my note is there, carryforward purchase order expenditures of $324,000. That is embedded in that $751,000 number. So those are prior-year purchase orders that are kind of held open. So this is an area of the three, so I've presented you with three funds so far. This is an area where we really are like watching it to make sure, this is an area where I, as a finance director, have my eye on this because I need to understand how it's moving and how it's performing as we look forward to '21, '22 and the development of the budget. Right now, we note that this particular fund has sufficient fund balance to be able to cover, this was part of the expectation and part of the plan, so to speak, for us to have some issues with this fund in terms of its revenue. So we continue to watch it. It is something that we're going to do some things differently in the development of the '21, '22 budget, but as I say, it is where, it is what it is at this point in terms of where the revenue and things are coming. The last thing I wanted to share is our investment portfolio and kind of to give you a graphical representation of how our investments are laid out. As of the end of the quarter, March 31st, we had a $96.5 million book value compared to a $96.6 million market value. So not a ton of unrealized gain or loss. The total weighted average maturity on all of those investments is a little bit under a year. That's 318 days. So just to kind of give you a picture of that, I typically always say this just to make sure, I know you have heard me say it enough, but I want to make sure that individuals that are watching and may be watching for the first time understand that, especially as you see this slide, these numbers are going to move in terms of book val, book value is going to stay the same, but in terms of market value, sometimes it's going to be an unrealized gain or an unrealized loss, depending on where you, where the lens of the camera opens and we take that picture, you know? We, as, from a management perspective, never fret too much over what is showing in terms of an unrealized gain or loss because our investment policy is to hold those funds into maturity. So we will realize our expecta, our expected values on those investment items. Any questions?
Evans-Jones, thank you for your presentation. Always thorough, always informative. Councilmember Rotana?
No questions for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Norwood?
Oh, I have a ton of questions.
Okay.
No, actually, I'm going to use my time tonight to just express my appreciation for all you've done for the city and for me over this last few years that you've been the finance director. I think that everybody would know that, let me see, as Yoda would say, budgeting my forte is not.
Mm-hmm. I like it. It's good. May fourth.
But my successor, it is. And so I'm sure she will keep you on your toes. But thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lynn?
Sherrell, I got to have a couple of questions. First one in relation, in regards rather, to sales tax.
Okay.
And the impact of legislation in Austin. Do we have any update as to where things stand with the proposed legislation? Because obviously, if what they're looking to do down there, it will have a severe impact on our sales tax.
Right. We have done some work to evaluate what that might mean to the city in terms of if, so let me back up and share a little bit of information with the public, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The legislation that you're referring to has to do with the change of the method of how sales tax is calculated. So instead of sales tax being calculated based on where it's shipped from, it, there is legislation being proposed that sales tax would be determined, especially for internet-based businesses, on where the item is shipped to. That would have a detrimental impact on the city of, the city of Farmers Branch finances. In terms of our approach, you know, we continue to watch and see what's happening down in Austin and do our best to make sure that they understand, you know, the impact of that on cities and our ability to provide quality service to our residents and business. But one, one thing that we can do in addition to talking with, in addition to talking with the lawmakers that are making those decisions, is make sure that we do the best that we can from a budgeting perspective in this upcoming year. So what you should expect to see in the '21, '22 budget is us doing some tweaks to, to take the air out of the tire a little bit, to make sure that we're not leaning so heavily on that revenue in the event that we have changes in legislation that, that cause issues for the city.
Well, you know, obviously, if we looked at worst-case scenario, which would be a disaster, and you losing $16 million out of our budget.
No.
And if that were to happen, and we wouldn't lose all that, but even at 50% of that, that's still a huge number that's got to be made up by the taxpayers.
So I don't want to scare anybody. The, the work that we've done to work with consultants gives us an idea of changes that we would expect. Of course, all of that is, you know, doing modeling and things like that. None of those modelings indicate that we would lose all $16 million or even half of $16 million. But we have some ideas in terms of how we might expect '21, '22 revenue to look. And what we're doing is taking that information from those sales tax experts and working it into our, working it into our estimates. We can't control what they do down in Austin, but we can control what we do here.
Understood. But we could lobby also, and I just wonder whether it makes sense for you and city manager to go down there and appear in person and try to lobby as this is being discussed?
That is the plan. I will tell you, the bill, it's House Bill 4072, and it is on, it's in calendars in the House right now. And so the next step would be to go for the, before the full, on the floor of the House. My understanding is it's got the votes to pass the House. So the next step would be, if it passes the House, go to the Senate. My plan is to go and, more than likely with one of y'all, to go and testify at the committee level and let, let the legislators know, at least the senators know of the impact it would have on our, on our community. And the big thing for us, and from my perspective, is that there has been no study at all done by the bill's author as to the impact of, of this legislation on local government. None, zilch.
Right.
And so it's imperative that we have our voice made known, and that's, that's our intent.
And one component of that lack of study, also just a thing to think about, is if we shift to destination, there are things that are being shipped from the, within Texas currently that somewhere in the state of Texas they're receiving revenue for, that is being shipped to another state that the whole state would lose. So that's what comes to mind as Charles is mentioning, City Manager Cox is mentioning, the lack of study around that number. Yeah.
Okay. Well, happy to go with you if that opportunity comes up. And the other thing that I had was, with respect to license and permit fees, you know, as, as we look ahead, especially with the West Side getting built out and maybe activity out there slowing, will we adjust our numbers in the coming, probably next two to three years?
Yes. So since you've been on council, that has been one of those financial discussions that we've had, talking about the fact that especially right now, as things are booming and getting built, you see, you know, an extreme, you know, an explosion of those numbers. That won't last forever. And so as we, my process includes working with our community service team, who has an idea of as permits and, and construction is happening, to develop that number using some sort of education in terms of working with them to figure out what is reasonable in terms of the rates of revenue that we're expecting from a given year. But you are absolutely right that you should expect that as things are built out, the revenue that relates to things being built out will, you know, begin to contract. I don't anticipate that to be a major contraction during this year because we still have things, you know, things to go. Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Thank you, Ms. Evans-Jones, for the presentation. I didn't want to get into the weeds, but from your perspective, I mean, this is for Q1, and, you know, we're getting shots in the arms, we're seeing the economic data's picking up. Are you pretty confident, looking out, you know, as best you can, that, you know, our budget's going to be pretty solid for the rest of the year?
Well, the numbers that we talked about with the general fund and the revenues that we talked about that are trending positively, like for instance, let me see if I can go back with this thing. Where's Paige? Up there. So with the numbers with property tax, that money is collected. That's, that's solid. In terms of sales and use, that also is a number that is collected. You know, most of those are coming in. The areas that I have concern or the areas that I'm watching or the areas that I took time to make sure that I explained in terms of Hotel Motel, et cetera, that those are the areas that we are definitely got our eye on, that are not performing in the manner that we would prefer.
Right. But, I mean, yeah, we'll see how the year rolls out, but given that, you know, we're expecting a lot more of the sports teams coming in here, you know, for soccer events and things like that.
Yes.
We've got a lot of motel nights last year that helped. Are there any areas, just in your personal opinion, that really kind of give you heartburn or that you're really worried about?
Not other than that. Right now, not, right now, other than Hotel Motel, right now, things are performing in terms of the core funds that we report on and that we, you know, analyze, those are performing well. Those are performing well overall. So like, for instance, with general fund, you will see some areas are, I'm pointing to property tax, some areas are hitting above expectations. There are some areas within this that are hitting below expectations. On a blended rate, I'm happy with how general fund is doing, and that's the lion's share. That's, you know, the majority of the ballgame right there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Councilmember Baumgartner?
Believe it or not, I have no question.
Oh.
All right. Well, Mrs. Evans-Jones, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is J2, receive an update from the Metrocrest Chamber of Commerce.
Are there questions, comments, or something that happened?
Oh, my apologies, yes. Good call. We do have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Roman? Thank you.
Omar Roman, 2001 Whittington Place. So I just have a few quick questions on this. I guess first I'd like to confirm when the fiscal year begins and ends. For those of us who don't know, I assumed it was October 1st since this was the mid-year. And then I'd also like to confirm at which point the expenses are added to a statement like this, whether it's as soon as an expense is paid or as soon as something is incurred. And then I paid particular attention to the, the, under revenues and the general fund results summary, the interest, rents, contributions, and miscellaneous. It looks like we've got a ways to go. So I just wasn't sure if that was something that was going to perform faster towards the end of the, end of the year or how we were going to get to that expectation. And then my other question was about, in the enterprise fund results summary, under the expenses, it looks like the percent change was 182.88% for the stormwater utilities. And I just was curious to see why there was such a, a big jump for that. And those were all the questions I had. Thank you.
Stay here, because I want to make sure I get them off. Okay. So question one, yes, you are correct. Our fiscal year end, we end on September 30th, start on October 1st. Very perceptive to pick that out. Your question in terms of rents, let me put my glasses on because I need to see that. Fines, fees, was that your interest? Which item were you asking a question about there?
Yeah.
Oh.
Interest, rent, contributions.
Well, well, that particular item is, is, it's a function of, that particular item, especially interest, is a function of what we have invested, and it takes a little bit of time for us to receive in our investment statements and have that item to be recorded. The third item that you asked questions about that I can remember, so I want to make sure that you, you know, do a tally for me, you had a question about stormwater and how it works. So let me explain that. You see, the actual number has what's called purchase orders. So purchase orders are like a financial, it's like basically we're, we're, we're pre-purchasing something. The money is not out the door, it's saying, "I'm gonna purchase something." That, whenever a purchase order is opened, it hits the actual.
Is this on a accrual basis?
We do. And so when, when the purchase order is, when the item is actually purchased, let's say you did a purchase order for $10, the thing end up costing $9, that number is tightened, that number is trued up. So the purchase order is removed and the true number is, is replaced in there. Our system allows for that balancing to happen. So right now, and this is actually good government practice because it allows us- now, and this is actually good government practice, because it allows us to measure for commitments, financial commitments that have been made and have those to be recorded within our financial statements and not be surprised by such large items that are not recorded. Okay. Did I get all of them?
You did.
Hey Sherrell, he asked when expenses hit the books. They usually hit our expense side when they're encumbered, right? When they're, when they're-
That's, that's exactly what we just talked about. So purchase order equals encumbrance. Those are, those terms are all kind of synonymous with one another.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Next is J2, receive an update from the Metrocrest Chamber of Commerce. Mrs. Carter?
Thanks, Ben. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and City Manager Cox. My name is Erin Carter. I'm the president of the Metrocrest Chamber of Commerce, 2550 Midway Road in Carrollton. To borrow one of Sherrell's terms, I have a superstar with me tonight. That is Jim Weichel with WA Fed, Washington Federal Bank. He is our past chair. Two of our board members who are sitting on the dais tonight, Mayor Dai and Councilmember Rotana, know him as Mr. Workamover. And so I've always wanted to get that phrase out in public record. And so Jim, that's my gift to you tonight. But thank you so much for joining us. It's been a little while since we've had an opportunity to give you a full update. And so I will go as quickly as possible. Chief Hale told me I had to pick my top five out of 10 slides, and I just can't commit to that, Chief Hale. So I'm so sorry about that. All right. As a reminder, we have four pillars of our strategic plan that we look to seek to complete. The fourth pillar is create organizational excellence, which is internal. But the three external pillars are champion for business, catalyst for economic prosperity, and convener of intentional connections. Each and everything we do, we look to source back to making sure we're meeting and exceeding the mission of those three areas of our organization. When I looked at our presentation tonight, I thought, we need to hear from a small business, and we need to hear from a big business. But they are busy, they're business owners, and they come to us during the day. So we thought we'd give them an evening off with their family, but we'd grab a quote and testimonial from them. So the first I'd like to share with you is from Luke Jackson, who is one of the co-founders and owners of Native Coffee along with his father. And Luke shared with us, navigating COVID has been an interesting journey since March of 2020. The Metrocrest Chamber has been a huge help to Native, supporting us through all phases of our business model shifting, connecting us with the community around us, and even helping us get connected with the city's parklet project to build local restaurants, outdoor spaces for customers to feel safe when visiting. This was big for us getting back to normal. Super appreciative of everything the Chamber and the city have done to help us. Our second testimonial of support that we grabbed was from a big business to have all spectrums, and that's founder and CEO of Big Game USA, Chris Calandro, who I will tell you, I adore immensely for his perseverance through COVID, but also through helping connect so many businesses to access to resources and items they needed. Chris shared, the Metrocrest Chamber is a tight-knit community of people who genuinely want to help each other. During COVID, the Chamber pulled the community even closer together to ensure businesses had the tools they needed to survive. The board understands the importance of putting businesses and their individual needs first. Over the years, the Chamber has tackled all facets of whatever we need. They continue to find a way to support us no matter the ask. And I'm glad Chris mentioned the ask, because what we see and know is that every business has a much different ask from the Chamber. And we would not be fortunate enough to work with the businesses and farmers' branch if not for listening to their asks first and acting on those acts second. So with that being said, I'm going to share some quick statistics about our organization. Every Chamber of Commerce in America is going to have a pie chart that looks similar to this. It might be different colors, the pie might look a little different, unless you're in an extremely rural community, like the middle of nowhere in Iowa, where a good girlfriend of mine runs the Chamber. Your pie chart, if you're in a first ring suburb of a major metro, is going to look similar to this. And that's because businesses join chambers where they want to do business and saturate that market. So you'll see, the green pie is the pie that represents our business membership from the City of Farmers Branch, and we currently have 58 members. All right. So 2020 in numbers, because I know that our liaison to our contract is Assistant City Manager Ben Williamson, and Ben loves data. So I made this slide just for you, Ben. We have 526 member businesses. In 2020, we had 52 professional development network opportunities. If you source back to a presentation we've done in the past, you would have seen over 100. And the reason for the difference, the delta between the two, is we took everything online. Our board made a commitment in March of 2020 to move our programs to virtual or remote settings so that way businesses could do the work they needed to do on the ground, keeping open, and we could be an auxiliary support to that. Our net growth per month is six members. So the net growth would be what we gain versus what we lose. By what we lose, it could be simply businesses going out of business, relocating, or choosing not to renew because they're no longer in business. But the most important number to look at is what we're gaining. And so our net is six approximate per month. Last year, we did 78 certificates of origin, which means we helped businesses get those purchase orders, similar to what Sherrell was just talking about, out and across the great world, because we know that our businesses locally do compete in the global market, and the only place to get a certificate of origin is a Chamber of Commerce. And so we're happy to help them with that. And we did 12 ribbon cuttings. The majority of those were in January and February and early March before we saw the shutdown. We offered virtual ribbon cuttings after that point, but I'm going to be honest with you, ribbon cuttings were not businesses' top priorities in 2020, and we had to shift accordingly. These numbers also helped us put together a roadmap for rebuilding. We were able to look at 2020 and see where we needed to go in 2021 to continue to deliver on our services to the City of Farmers Branch and all of our business members. All right. So chambers of the future, you have seen this slide before, because I am committed to getting you all to remember that chambers of the future do three things. They serve as champions, conveners, and catalysts for economic prosperity in their communities. I will tell you that chambers of the past participated in parades, pageants, and parties. We've done a hard look to make sure we're not participating in any of those things. Because we know businesses are saturated with opportunities, we have to bring them the crucial things that keep them in, in business. Now during 2020, we added a few words, because we knew that the most important things for businesses was access to resources, togetherness, and then again, resources and opportunities. This is a busy chart, but this is a year in review of our resources. Samples of those resources are federal funding and grant sharing, PPP seminars, LISC grant information, the shuttered venue grant, which rolled through many different processes, but now is finally open, open farmers' branch funding opportunities. I know the mayor and Ms. Cook and I had a great opportunity to talk about that with some of our businesses also on a virtual platform. Our economic development speakeasies, Allison, Ms. Cook, was joined by her two counterparts in Addison and Carrollton to really talk about what our three economic development departments were seeing. And we saw a lot of good traction for that. We're bringing those in person now going forward. And then, of course, unemployment information. We have to be there for every facet of a business, and we also have to be there from employee to employer. Access was so important. And from the Chamber of Commerce world, we've seen that chambers need to talk about what Chamber 2.0 is, and it's not just putting on great events, it's providing access to resources for information. In 2020, we had a state of education, a state of health, state of Dallas County, state of aviation, women's business forum luncheons, virtually a legislative standoff, which I'm going to pivot on and give some updates based on what Ms. Evans Jones and City Manager Cox were just talking about. A state of Texas budget. I see I put state of Dallas County in there, because obviously, we really enjoy working with Commissioner Koch. And then a state of the state, which I know Councilmember Rotana helped us with, was Rep. Raphael Anchia, Representative Anchia, and then a virtual mayor's forum. I would be remiss if I didn't stop and thank the City of Farmers Branch and their participation in our virtual mayor's forum. Obviously, Mayor Dai was there, but really the stars of the day were Jeff's predecessor, Tom Bryson, and Kevin Slater, who is behind here somewhere making it all work. But he absolutely made it possible for us to bring the message of unity from our three cities to our business memberships online. And then, of course, we were next door at the Firehouse Theater, and that was a great format for that. And then togetherness, Metrocrest Morning Leeds is every Tuesday. We've been meeting every Tuesday virtually since March of 2020. We're moving back to in-person. Virtual ribbon cuttings and newly-elected council meet and greets. So I know Councilmember Driscoll participated in that. It was a virtual format. But I also want to make sure that we know that although we're deeply going to miss you, Councilmember Norwood and Councilmember Baumgartner, you're really going on to what's next, which is being the grandfathers you're so great at. So we're excited to see this next chapter for each of you. And of course, soon grab the two newly-elected but not yet canvassed council members, Tracy Williams and David Merritt. And so we're excited to continue to work with the entire back team behind the dais. So quickly about a legislative update, we're in the final session of, we're in the final month of the 87th session. And I know that I've had the privilege of talking to your city manager quite often about this, but the Sales Tax Destination versus Origination Bill, House Bill 4072, I have the same information that your city manager does, and that it does have the votes to pass. So from us as a Chamber of Commerce perspective, when we know that 93% of all businesses currently report sales and local tax, we have to talk to our businesses about how to be prepared. And so that's when we flip from advocating against something to advocating to support them in their current time of need. I will also give you two other updates. We're watching Chapter 313, updates, changes, whatnot, and that's, of course, House Bill 1556 or 4242. They're slightly different. And then we're also watching House Bill 1418, which gives unprecedented immunity to building contractors. And I know that that's been a conversation here at the dais. And so we have our best opportunities to advocate on behalf of our business communities, because the Chamber of Commerce is one voice of business. So if I can help you with any of that, I'm always here and willing to listen or connect. And Chief Hale, I'm almost done, so hang on. And then, of course, last but not least, we could not do this if we didn't get to work together. So everyone has to pin in a good joke slide once in a while, and mine is, as the legendary Rob Base and DJ Eazy Rock said, "It takes two to make a thing go right. It takes two to make it out of sight." So I might be aging myself with that great hip-hop classic. But at the same time, we certainly could not do what we do without a partnership. And it takes, in our case, really four of us, Farmers Branch, Addison, and Carrollton. But we are here tonight to talk to you about how grateful we are for our continued partnership with the City of Farmers Branch and the wonderful businesses that exist in this community. So switching back to my non-rap days, we're all in this together, building business, breaking boundaries. And I'm thrilled to be able to answer any questions on behalf of the Metrocrest Chamber. And I'm also going to bring my superstar up here, Mr. Workamover, Jim Michael, if you have any questions for him as well. So that is my presentation.
Ms. Carter, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your leadership in our community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rotana, do you have anything?
No, not questions really. Just want to thank you for all that you do for our city. I know that, you know, working on the public policy side myself and as a member on my, on the professional level, as far as, as part of children's health, not a lot of chambers do, do a lot of work around advocacy and tracking the legislation. And I think you all do a really great job with, with the capacity that you have, a team of one, with an amazing board. And so I just want to thank you all for, for all of your efforts in keeping us abreast of what's going on at the legislative level, but also ensuring that our businesses have the tools that they need. So just want to thank you, and I, I enjoy being a part of the board as on the professional side, and just look forward to continuing our work together.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Councilmember Norwood?
No questions there. Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Now, I miss seeing you on these monthly updates, but hopefully we'll see each other around.
We will. I'll find you in Leslie, no matter where you go. That sounded like a threat, but it was more of an opportunity. Sorry about that.
Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Erin. I don't have any questions, but again, I'd just like to reiterate, your chamber does a really good job for us. I know your time's split and trying to be fair with the other cities that you work for also. And, but if anybody knows me, they know I'm greedy. And so I want more work for Farmers Branch, and we want to do everything we can. But appreciate you being an advocate for our city, as well as the others.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lynn. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes. Thank you very much, Erin, for the presentation. And I don't have any questions. We've been in contact, will remain in contact. And you do do a great job for Farmers Branch and the other cities in our region here. And just keep up the good work, and talk to you again soon.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Driscoll.
Councilmember Baumgartner?
Yeah, I'd just agree with that. Great work, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Mike.
Cool. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We don't have anyone signed up to speak to this item, so we will move on to J3, receive an update from the Farmers Branch Chamber of Commerce. Mrs. Spees.
Good evening, Mayor Dai. Good evening, Council. First of all, we do just want to also thank you guys for being a partner with our Chamber of Commerce. I would like to extend a, sorry, extend a special thank you to Mayor Dai, Councilmember Rotana, Councilmember Norwood, and Councilman Lynn for attending our Platinum Lunches, as well as Chief Hale for helping us to launch this 2021, really building the bridges between our business community, our Platinum members specifically, and the City of Farmers Branch. Also, a thank you to City Manager Cox and John Land for taking time to meet with us. And also, again, to John Land for taking time to meet with our consultants as we build our three-to-five-year strategic narrative. All right. We're going to move more into just, I really want to share the stories of what's happening in real time. I'll move through some quantitative data. But first, I just want to highlight a couple of things that have happened this year. First of all, with our new programs, our new membership levels, we're seeing a pretty rapid uptick in growth. We had a net 19 new members for the first quarter, seven members for this last month. So that includes two more Platinum members and two Platinum Plus, which is a $5,000 level that we have built out, up to $10,000. We now have membership. So we're excited. We're seeing, again, an increase in our average revenue per member. And over the last year, we worked aggressively to decrease our average cost per member in order to bring our organization into a greater level of financial parity. Our legislative advocacy is a new pillar of our chamber. We are, is a work in progress. We formed a committee. We also have rallied our board members and numerous other members of our business community to email and write and call their elected officials on House Bill 4072 specifically. We've also been serving myself and another board member on the advisory council to Chief Hale, and again, just establishing more relationships with Senator Johnson's office, Representative Johnson's office, and among others. So I want to talk about our Business Expo. This was our first event of the year. This happened at the beginning of April. This was a really great and promising event to show, you know, that we're moving, one of our, our objectives is to help jumpstart the local economy and move the business community forward. We had over 40 businesses in attendance over a four-hour period. We expect that over 200 attendees were able to walk through and get to meet with businesses, and businesses were able to, again, meet and start building more relationships and transactions. We also had a speaker's corner. I want to give a special thank you to one of our Platinum members who's here. You guys have met him, Rob Bliss, who really took the reins on making that an excellent event. Now, the reason there are so many students in our audience this evening, we just launched this program. I left you all handouts this evening. So we launched a Workforce Success Bootcamp. There is a very real problem currently in the labor market. Numerous businesses are wanting to hire and not finding a willing workforce. Our objective here is to help the community as a whole, as well as employers, to have qualified talent to integrate into the workforce. We understand that these impressive young men and women who are here this evening, they are spending a Saturday morning with us for six weeks. They're about to graduate high school. Many of them will finish with a college degree. They'll be the first generation in their family, and they will enter our future workforce. And they're sacrificing their Saturday morning in order to develop professional skills. And then a large portion of the program is focused on emotional intelligence. With us this evening, I'd like to invite Raymond Flores. He's one of our students. We've been working on our elevator pitches, and he is here to share that with you this evening. So Raymond, I'm going to make this taller for you. You can take your mask off if you can. You got this.
Good evening, Mayor Dai and Council. My name is Raymond Flores. I'm a student, I'm a senior at Early College High School, where I not only will graduate with a high school diploma, but also an associate's degree in science. I decided to be part of the Skills for Success Bootcamp to, because I already dream with ambition. I just want to sharpen my skills to lead and, lead with conviction and confidence. I'm a hard work, hard worker, growth mindset, and a leader. I will attend the University of Texas at Arlington, and I will major in international business. I know that anything is possible, so I won't settle until I achieve my goals. Thank you.
As you can see, we're super proud. We did work on elevator pitches. They'll finish the program with a polished resume, a LinkedIn profile, with a headshot, as well as a certificate of completion from the chamber, a letter. And we've invited Mayor Dai. All of you are welcome to graduation day. It's Saturday, May 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. at the Branch Church. So we're really excited for these students to enter our local workforce. As a chamber, we feel it's our responsibility to help equip and empower them and to serve our employers with talented, with, with a pool of talent. And again, I'm, I'm really passionate about this program. I can't stress enough the importance of the emotional intelligence that they're learning, no matter what their industry or discipline, whether it's professional, and it'll even positively impact- positively impact their personal lives and make them positive world citizens. So again, thank you, Mr. Isley. Thank you to the students at Early College High School for being here this evening. And I want to talk about our Adopt a Business program. So through one of our new programs we launched this year, Los Jefes, is to serve our Hispanic-owned business community. We met Linda, who owns Art of the Fruit, and she is, she's an incredible, sweet, super hard-working woman. And unfortunately, like many others, she's been struggling over the last year as a small kind of restaurant. But her gift that she wants to bring to the world is one of health. She makes smoothies, fresh juices. And so we and many of the members of our Chamber have dug in to really help support her in other areas of business. Oftentimes, you'll find a business, an artist isn't always the entrepreneur, and it takes many minds who might have skill or talent or expertise in another area to help round out a business. So we've done numerous things. We were assisting with her marketing efforts. She did have a, something that needed corrected, some hardware needs. And one of our Board members, before the end of the day, ran to Ace Hardware and got that fixed up for her in order to have a safe business. And we are also working on, our, our next project with her is to work on budgeting, and we will be helping to appropriately price her products so that we can see her be more profitable for the long term. So she's here this evening. Thank you, Linda, for joining us. Again, just a sweet woman and our heart is to serve. Again, we have Platinum Members who have, you know, some needs, and then we have small businesses who, who need real-time help and assistance. And again, this program was also partially the brainchild of Rob Bliss. And, you know, we also work with Jesse Castaneda, who is currently at training this week for the Marines, so he couldn't be here. But we're very grateful for the community that we have that steps up to support and help each other. And lastly, really, our heart, I'm not going to talk a lot about committees, but I'm going to shoot to one of our videos we created. Our heart is to make an interconnected community. We understand as a Chamber that we touch residents. Numerous of our people that came this evening are residents, as well as business owners. Tabitha here lives at Mustang Station and hangs out at a lot of the local tea shop and now frequents the smoothie shop as well. So we believe that, right, getting the feedback of residents, as well as businesses, working with the school district, as well as the city government, is key for us to see a prosperous community. So this video really is to capture that.
My American dream is to help you stay healthy and energized so you can live your American dream.
Our American dream is equipping future generations of American dreamers.
My American dream is to protect my community so they can live their American dream.
My American dream is to bring you some spice and flavor to your life.
Our American dream at Asher Interiors is making your American dream more beautiful and comfortable.
Our American dream is ensuring what's most valuable to you.
Our American dream is to feed your American dream, to provide the most incredible barbecue experience we can.
Our American dream is creating opportunities for healthcare providers so they can have their American dreams.
My American dream is serving our business community and advocating for all of your American dreams.
So in closing, once again, I'd just like to thank the city for your partnership, for your continued investment through the transition of our Chamber over the years. Thank you again to the leadership of our Board of Directors. Thank you for those who chose to attend this evening and support our organization. We're confident that the City of Farmers Branch, our future is bright. Thank you.
Mrs. Spees, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you very much for your leadership in this community and all that you're doing. Mr. Flores, well done on your elevator pitch. Wish you nothing but success as you matriculate to UTA and pursue a degree in international business. And for the rest of the students as well, excited for your future and glad you're a part of this. You know, you know, it's a big step, and we're all just, you know, encouraged by what you're doing, not only here, but what you're going to do in the future. So appreciate it. Councilmember Tom.
Thank you, Grace. And I just want to say thank you for all the different initiatives that you're spearheading. You know, I, since I started on Council, I've seen you grow in your position and really just continue to see the growth in all the things that you're doing. I think you're doing a great job, and so just look forward to seeing all these new initiatives come into fruition. I am super excited about the boot camp. I'm a huge proponent of investing in our higher, in higher education and investing in our students, so I'm really excited about your program. Wish you nothing but success. So just keep on doing great work, and thank you so much for investing in Farmers Branch.
Thank you.
Councilmember Norwood.
You're doing great.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much. Keep it up.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Lynn.
Grace, thank you. You've certainly been a busy bee during the, the time that you've been Executive Director of the Chamber. I appreciate it, and I know the city does. And it's important, and I want everybody to know, we're served by two chambers. We're, we're very fortunate in that regard. They're not there to compete against each other. They're both serving the interests of Farmers Branch, and that's really important. I did want to say, I don't know that the Mayor would allow any, all y'all to come up, but you'd probably be shaking in your boots if you had to come up and make your pitch, but it's really important. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you participated in the program. You know, I hope that as you grow, not only in your schooling, but in your working careers, that you'll remember this moment. And maybe, you know, when you're living on your own, you'll attend a council meeting. This is your government in action. They don't teach you this in a textbook. They don't teach you this in school. So it's really, I think, a lesson to be learned that you're here. And to be involved with the Chamber and benefit from this experience is going to give you a leg up that many of your peers just won't have. So be confident in that. And when you talk about what you're doing, be confident because you have something that a lot of other kids don't have. And I, I think it's great. And so my hat's off to you all for participating. Thank you for, to the Chamber for not only serving our business community, but also helping to develop the future of what's going to be running these businesses in our city here one of these days.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Yes, I'd just like to add my thanks, Grace. You're doing a terrific job with the Chamber. And I think it's a wonderful program that you've started with ramping up the students, starting their careers, and moving into exciting transition in their development. And from my perspective here on the Council, just wish you continued success as you serve the community and help businesses connect and, and grow, especially coming out of the pandemic. And as a local business owner and a member of the Chamber, I also appreciate it and I'm proud to be a member of the Farmers Branch Chamber.
Thank you.
So just keep it up.
Councilmember Baumgartner.
Yeah, I would like to echo that as well. I think the momentum that you've created in the past 12 to 15 months, the past 12 to 15 months, especially in light of the pandemic and all the challenges that we've been facing here, have been incredible. So keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We don't have anyone signed up to speak to this item, so we move on to K. Take any action necessary as a result of the closed executive session. And with that, I make a motion to amend the City Manager's employment agreement to increase the City Manager's base salary by 3% to extend the term of his agreement for one additional year and authorize the Mayor to execute such amendment.
Second?
I have a second by Councilmember Lynn. Is there any more discussion from Council? We don't have anyone signed up to speak to this item, so with that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. With no other business to conduct, I will adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:16 p.m. Everyone have a good night.